Welcome, everybody. Let's please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I need a motion to approve the agenda. Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll just go right on into the discussion items. I'm gonna kind of turn everything over to CFO, Grantham.
I included quite a bit of documentation in our meeting this evening to go over some of the information that we presented at previous meetings. It's just there for if it comes up in discussion, so we have it as a resource. The basis of this meeting tonight is that forward copy of the FY25 reductions spreadsheet that was shared with all of you. I apologize that it's not in Google Sheets, but Google Sheets would not keep my formulas. So, it is in Excel. Maria, would you mind opening the Excel document? So, based on all of our previous meetings, budget work sessions, we can, to the realization that we are looking at a projected shortfall next year of 1.1 million. So, that does tie to the information that was presented in the April budget work session. We met as a district leadership team and we met with all of our admins from all of our buildings to brainstorm some ideas of where we could help reduce the budget for next fiscal year. In order to have a collaborative working session with the board, we brought these four ideas forward and they're presented in this spreadsheet here. So, that top number, that projected FY25 shortfall, that 1.1 million, comes from the documentation that was off the April budget work session. All of the items below are items that we could add in. And adding them in, it would increase the shortfall that we have for next fiscal year. When we get down to the areas of reduction, by checking those boxes, we would be able to basically nut against that shortfall and hopefully get to zero or a positive number, which is where we'd like to end the evening, so that we have some direction moving forward, so we can finalize the budget and ahead of the budget hearing. Be happy to walk through each line item with you, kind of explain the basis. Superintendent Arnold would be able to give some insight on some of them as well. If you would like, I can take the mouse and kind of navigate.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just steal your mouse, Maria. Okay, so, like I said at the beginning, is our shortfall. There's some items that we can take into consideration that would increase that shortfall. So, as of right now, that shortfall is based on everything staying exactly the same. So, no pay increases, no increases to benefit share for employees. Nothing, there would literally be, just everything would roll forward as it is this year. So, at the board's discretion, we can add in, and obviously, we have IDV negotiations still, but we can add in step increases for certificated employees. That expense would be estimated at $397,712. That does include the mandatory benefits that are associated with that. So, if we were to click on that one, for example, that brings our total surplus up to, or our total deficit up to 1.5 million. If we were to do the classified employees as well, that is 188,000. Sorry, I'm looking off two screens up. 188,000 for classified employees, and then for admin and directors, it would be 43,000. I'll just go through each one of them and then we can go back and kind of click buttons if you'd like. An increase in district share of benefits. Currently, the district pays $825 a month, up to $825 a month to offset the employees' cost of benefits. To offset the increase in medical premiums for next year, we are proposing to increase that to $860 to be able to cover, essentially, if someone were to pick single everything, it would cover the cost of that coverage. And so, that would be an additional cost of $252,000 to bump everybody up. Not every employee uses the full allowance, but that would allow an employee who had elected single everything to have that paid in full. The next one is to freeze AP stipends but allow step movement. So, as we discussed at the April budget work session, AP stipends are built into the salary-based apportionment. We do not receive separate funding from the state for advanced placement funding. It's part of our salary-based apportionment calculation. We are essentially using fund balance or supplemental levy to fund those currently, because it's above and beyond what we received for the state for that classification of employees. If we were to freeze them but allow the step movement, so if you had somebody who is currently AP1 and they were able to go to AP2 this year, we would keep the stipends at the same dollar amount this year, but we would allow that step movement for that employee. If anybody's at an AP4 and potentially going up to an AP5, they would stay at an AP4 stipend level, which this year, an AP4 was $7,494, if I'm remembering that off the top of my head correctly. If we choose to fully implement AP5 stipends, as was discussed previously in IDV sessions last year, the basis of that step was essentially the AP5 rung on the state's career ladder less the professional 5 rung on the state's career ladder, which would make the AP5 $11,500 this year. If we were to fully implement that and move everybody, it would be an additional $454,000 to do that. So, those are all the areas where we can essentially add to the budget. They're all essentially related to employee compensation and employee benefits. All right, moving down the line to potential areas of reduction. This is broken up in several areas certified. We currently have 12 vacant teaching positions. These are vacant through attrition and retirements. If we were to not fill those positions with the associated benefits, it would be a reduction to that deficit of $960,600 and some change. SLP contracts, these two SLP contracts, the reason it's already clicked is because it's already done. We had, we're able to hire two people, and this is essentially the difference between their salaries and what we were paying for those contracts. So, this is a savings that the district has already realized, which is why I already have it clicked for you.
That leads to more SLP contracts that we still have, but gives us two that we have in the district.
So, it's definitely beneficial for us to have those in-house. However, we all know how difficult it has been to hire those positions, which is why we have contracted services for that. The next thing would be a zero cost for us if we were to freeze AP stipends at this year's cost. So, that would be no movement and just freeze everybody exactly where they are. And next, the next one, if we were to eliminate AP flow through with some adjustments. And so, there's some rationale behind this. Currently, for this fiscal year, we have paid out $726,000 in advanced professional stipends. That's above and beyond what we're receiving from the state. Like I said, that comes either from fund balance or supplemental levy funds. If we were to eliminate that and then use some of that $726,000 to back, fill the top end of our salary matrix and kind of move people to where they should be, if we weren't taking the AP stipends into account, kind of fix our salary matrix, we would still be able to infuse about $500,000 back into the budget for next year. So, that would be a big lift for this year, but it is something that we could look at potentially doing. Again, these are all just ideas for consideration. You can pick them, you don't have to pick them, we can talk about them some more. The next one would be something I think the board has expressed some... I don't think of the right word here, please.
A desire.
Desire, yep. It's to eliminate the LE president halftime position and stipend. So, the cost for that would be $5,733. If we were to cut counselor extra day stipends, it would be $55,000. We put a couple of things on here that are zero dollar reductions, but they do help in the overall, since we do have 12 vacant positions. If we were to move specialists into vacant positions, that would be a no cost to us, as well as moving AOP teachers into vacant positions. That would be no cost to us, but we wouldn't have to hire people to help offset those 12 vacant positions. So, it would kind of protect that 12 number that we're working with. So, that is all of the selected certified cuts. Or not selected, excuse me. That's all of the areas or reductions for certified area that we were talking about. Administrator cuts, we could eliminate administrator positions at the... Well, we did eliminate two positions at the district office in June of '22. So, we did have five administrative positions here at the district office. We are now down to three. And so, there is no dollar amount associated with that, but we did have that cut a couple of years ago. Eliminating the middle school athletic directors, that would take away two stipends there, that's $14,000. Changing the Timberlake Middle School and Lakeland Middle School assistant principals to assistant principals slash ADs. So, the ADs, assistant principals would take on those AD duties, athletic director duties, with no additional stipend. And then reducing TMS administrators by one FTE. The reason that is a small dollar amount of $1,100 is because they would go back into the classroom. So, there is a small amount of savings, but, I mean, it's a pretty small amount of savings to move them from administrator back into the classroom. Moving on to classified cuts. Reducing the high school library aides by one and a half FTE would be $49,000. We could reduce a four-hour driver, it's currently going to be vacant position due to a retirement. This is, if we do this, this will come forward as a non-transportation zone next year if we were not to replace this route. So, it's one driver doing a four-hour route, kind of out in a pretty remote area of the district. It would require a non-transportation zone.
Jessica's concerned about her ability to fill it because it's only four.
Not me, the transportation director.
Sorry.
Jessica. Reduce PSCs, that's four FTE would be $40,000.
So, that's the program support coordinators that were added when the levy took that $3 million bump. The four FTE are in areas where Kelsey feels like they have more pairs than they need. And so, by reducing our PSC, we're getting kind of in alignment with what we need. Excuse me, those buildings.
Reduce BICS and RBIS, that would be eight FTE equivalent, that's $278,000. I can rely on this.
Behavior intervention coordinator, so we have one in each of the elementarys and one in each middle school. It's an eight-hour pair of position. Kind of help with that just behavior. The BICS at the elementary schools are outside for all recesses, so there's some consistency, sorry, I'm trying to clear my throat. Consistency with playground rules and what kids are going to account for, trying to minimize some behaviors.
The next one is reducing admin assistance. This would be one full-time position and two half-time positions for $91,000. As far as operational cuts, we could do a 5% building budget reduction. This is instructional materials, office supplies, that kind of stuff. It would be 5%, which is 9,200. Eliminating extra pay for extra duty stipends. So, there's a small budget for each building for extra pay for extra duties. Taking that out would be $30,000.
Those are things. That $200 stipend to make sure that the cougar patch is weeded. Over at John Brown, $300 for like a homework club after school. It's small little things that teachers want to do to support kids.
Next one would be to reduce the field trip budget. So, this would eliminate field trip budgets for next fiscal year, that's $55,200.
I think with the exception of the fourth grade field trips to Catalina because of the tie to the...
Instructional.
...I hope it's three.
Reducing the library materials budget, that's what completely take away library materials. There would be still $500 for supplies for findings and all the other needs that they have, but it wouldn't be to buy new content for the libraries. And that would be $25,559. Reducing software costs, we have about $3,000 there. We're eliminating utilizing Jack Rabbit. And so, that, I think there was one other program today that we learned about today. Jack Rabbit names went, but another program today was $1,200. So, as we get further into the end of this fiscal year and we're looking at those, there's, but they're small amounts. So, that would be potentially a little bit more, but for the sake of the conversation tonight, it's about $3,000. Yep, sorry. I'm looking off two screens, I apologize. Eliminating activity buses at Lakeland High School. We would not eliminate the activity buses at Timberlake. We have a lot of ridership up there and it would probably greatly impact the ability of the students at Timberlake to participate in the extracurricular activities if we were to eliminate the routes up there based on their distance from the school.
But we only have one consistent rider from Lakeland High School. So, we're running an entire activity bus route for all students.
Holding interscholastic activities to budget. This year, we're projected to go over in interscholastics by 189,000. If you remember the projections from the April budget work session, if we held them to budget, meaning if they go over, their building would have to cover it. That would put money back into our budget, because they would have to stay within what we were able to provide. And just a reminder, that the spending for interscholastics is above and beyond what we collected via the supplemental levy. So, that's just the amount that's above and beyond what we have. Holding the uniform rotation for one year, that doesn't mean that we're not going to potentially cover uniforms, just holding it for next year would be $40,000. So, between the 149 and the 40,000, that would get us to the 189 that we're open this year. Eliminating extra day stipends. So, we had a handful of administrators and counselors, admin assistants who had some extra days that we foresee not needing those next year. So, that's a $10,600 savings. Reduce position and maintenance, that's a six-hour position. That would be about $41,568. And then, we clicked eliminate building guest teachers. We have to do this, so it's clicked for you because it's a must that we have to do.
So, for the last probably three or four years, we've had building level assigned guest teachers, so they would have one person assigned to their building and they're there every day so that they, because there's always, there's always somebody out, well, 90% of the time. But on the 2%, if there wasn't an empty classroom to work in, they were pulling kids and working with them in interventions. But our HR director would like us to no longer continue this practice, so we are not. Would you like to explain?
Essentially, if we wanted to continue this practice, we would need to hire a full-time loader and provide benefits for that position. The way that we're doing this, we're not providing benefits because it's a guest teacher. And we're not providing benefits, in theory, we probably should.
So, we're not doing one?
So, by eliminating the program, it eliminates the expense. We probably will have a realized expense, very sub-costs, because, but the sub-costs are less than having these permanent guest teachers. Not permanent, but special appointment guest teachers. The last thing on here is contracted services. We can eliminate the Senski contract. In doing so, it would require us to purchase additional equipment. So, the Senski contract is about $23,000 a year. We're saying it'd be about a $12,000 savings, because we're still going to have to buy the chemicals and fertilizer and all that stuff to do it our own. From the general fund, that's where that would come from, however, from the plant facility levy funds that we have for next fiscal year, we could purchase the equipment to do the spraying and spreading ourselves. Can I provide any other information on any of the items that we have listed?
This obviously isn't an all-inclusive list, but we, this is, this is, these were our brainstorm, so I don't know if you guys have anything that you want to add.
Adds tracks. Yep.
How distributed are the 12 vacant positions across the district?
They are... Distributed across our high schools and our elementary schools. Can't think of a middle school teacher. However, at Timberlake Middle School, they are looking at ways to reduce their staffing and they're fully K8. So, if we end up because of registration needing a K8 teacher because we need to fill a classroom at the elementary school, those people are available to do that.
We had long conversations, I mean, over the last, we can have two weeks, on how we would be able to potentially shift existing employees to help fill the vacancies at each building.
One of the things that we talked about today that I cautioned the district office team about is when you're having to make cuts like this, it's really easy to, for the brunt of it to fall on the elementary level because they don't have the high school requirements. It's, they have one class, you can move people around. And so, we're just trying to be really cognizant of making sure that we're not doing that. We're kind of being, which is why we broke things out by areas across the district to make sure that we're being...
As equitable as possible. There are no questions, I can start moving through the line items and discussing with the board if you would like to select them or not. Again, we can add and adjust as we see fit. So, if you pick something now and decide by the end of the evening that that's not what you want to have on there, we'd be happy to unclick it.
As you scroll down through your questions and you got to check what blocks for those. Oh, okay.
Yep.
So, how do we, yeah, I guess is that?
Would you like, I guess for me, the basis of the budget right now is the shortfall where we need to cut. And so, if we're going to add anything to that shortfall, I suggest we start there so that when we're working through the items for areas of reduction, we know we're hitting the mark. Anything that we leave in that total surplus slash deficit, that's a negative number, would have to come out of fund balance next fiscal year if we're not able to make enough cuts to get to that, which is always an option. As we discussed in projecting, that we'll have a 9.33% fund balance going into next fiscal year if everything pans out the way that it should. In our board policy, we said we wouldn't go below 8%. The only thing that I caution, that the more that we choose to eat into fund balance, the harder it is to build surplus into that fund balance and keep it where we need to keep it. If there's anything unexpected next year, we end up having to hire more special education personnel or anything like that, that upsets the balance of the budget, because we're budgeting based on needs from this year and potentially declining enrollment next year. We're looking at potentially having 124 less students next year. So, we're not looking to add any positions right now. If something were to change next year and we had to, that will automatically put us into potential fund balance. So, I just, just putting that caution out there. So, at the board's discretion, are any of these potential increases to the shortfall something they would like to see included in next year's budget?
Yeah, but in all honesty, I'd like to approach it a little differently.
No, I'm open to any suggestions.
We know that we're at 1.1 shortfall. I think we ought to balance to that first and then go back and see if I have any.
No problem. So, with the SLP contracts and the guest teachers already selected, that is bringing the total reduction needed to 791,000 based on the automatic calculation in the spreadsheet.
Because she, she's got two things checked down.
Yep, so down below, I have this 190, 965 for the SLP contracts and then the 142, 987 for the building guest teachers.
So, that totals to 33,300. 791,000, yeah?
The easiest one, to be honest, would be the 12 vacant positions that we have currently by 1.
So, let's go there and see what the balance is.
So, that brings us to...
But we also, just real quick before we get too far, we were significantly over in special education. There's not a single change on here regarding special education. How are we going to address that situation where it was already, it was over last year?
So, the way that I'm building the budget next year is that's taking that into account. So, it's actually building the budget to be at what we spent this year for special education. So, that's already factored in.
That's part of that 1.125.
That's giving us to balance to where we are at for special education funding.
So, the work over the next couple of years is, Kelsey's working with case managers. So, when we get IEPs coming into our district that require services, like a one-on-one or some service that is going to cost us a lot of money. One of the things she's working with her case managers on is starting to write our IEP goals so that we phase out some of that reliance on the one-on-one and get them either to a two-on-one or a three-on-one so we can start to reduce the classified staff. But until we get kids where they can function in that way and we write IEP that way, we can't really go in and just take several special ed positions.
And does that have anything to do with the move of a bunch of students to Timberlake Middle School?
Move of the bunch of students?
Special ed students to Timberlake Middle School?
That is the life skills. So, the life skills at Lakeland Middle School is getting big and we've been busing everybody down from Timberlake Middle School. And they actually now have enough to have their kids in their neighborhood schools. So, Kelsey's just, we're not hiring anybody new. She's just moving the Timberlake Middle School life skills kids to Timberlake Middle School.
Okay.
So, if we do click that, reduce the teaching staff by the current 12 vacant positions for next fiscal year, that leaves us with a total surplus of $174,515 without making any additional cuts. So, that puts us in the green for next fiscal year.
The answer here is special ed, I believe we were told that the majority of that cost is all the outside contracting.
Uh huh.
So, I'm looking at contracts. We actually, that was 190?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the difference between what we're going to pay those people and what we were paying in the contract. And it's significant what we pay for contracts. We actually looked at, because in, I don't remember if it's Cortland or Post Falls, but in one of those districts, because you can't find school sites, they, they made the decision not to hire anymore because they didn't want to do the contracts and then just give the...
and then just give the existing sites a stipend to start to cover part of those other vacant positions. So we looked at doing that. The problem is, is we only have, we have one full-time school psych who's already doing a point two of another school psych. So we didn't have anybody to even add it to. So we are looking at the contracts and desperately trying to hire those. But some of those positions are just really hard to find.
So if you're looking at the FYE twenty-five general fund estimate and any balances, if you add up the special education program and the special education preschool, we were over about one point two million. So if we were to include that in our budget for next year, like I said, that is, the correlation is there, the majority of the shortfall that we have for next year. Keeping in mind that the shortfall takes into account the small amount of additional revenue that we anticipate to receive from the state and then it takes account, into account the increased expenses for ICRIM, workers comp and our per se rate increases that are the employer's share. We did receive some news on our ICRIM renewal rate. It came in quite a bit higher than I projected. So we're looking at an additional twenty thousand dollars above what I anticipated. With some, with workers comp coming in lower and ICRIM coming in higher, it works out to, we need an additional twenty thousand dollars to cover the liability insurance increase. That was not in here because I didn't get that information until those had been submitted.
And why it was such an increase?
There is a very long explanation about it. The, the rate of, let me just pull it up because I don't want to misspeak. But it was an extremely long explanation as to why.
Was it like it crossed the board, everybody?
Across the board, everybody is going up. We had a pretty significant share, if you look at percentages of their claims over the last year. So over the last five and a half years, they've, Idaho, basically the, the program has offered significant losses to the tune of six point seven million dollars. That put us into a deficit for their program. We've contributed over a half a million dollars to that six point seven ourselves, just our district alone, which is seven point eight percent of the deficit because of our claims experience. ICRIM can't continue to sustain those kinds of hits and so they had to increase rates. Property values for our, for across the state have gone up as well. On the whole, they've gone up about nineteen percent in total. For Lakeland School District, property values are up four percent this year, but they are up seventy-two percent over the last five years. So to ensure that we're ensuring our property appropriately in case of a catastrophic loss, we have to experience a rate increase related to that. Again, reinsurance costs have also skyrocketed. ICRIM themselves has sustained increases of over a hundred thousand dollars, or over a hundred percent during the last three years alone. And so they're not, they don't have as much for every dollar that we, we provide fifty-seven, for every dollar premium that is paid, fifty-seven cents of that goes to reinsurance dividend commissions, operating expenses, et cetera. That doesn't leave very much for them to pay claims out of. And so they're having to increase rates like that. And that's even with them going out and shopping for new reinsurance partners. So that is the reason for the rate increase. We are meeting with ICRIM on the twenty-second to discuss it further. I did anticipate that it would go up because we did increase our contents value on the buildings because we all know things have gotten more expensive. They just have. And so to ensure that we are covered appropriately, I had to increase the content value workers work with. They had given us some ideas of what it should be for buildings based on what they're experiencing with claims payouts. So we did adjust them up. It's not just that though. It's not just the contents increases. It's all of these factors combined into one. So the total premium increase for next fiscal year is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars essentially over what we paid last year, which is a lot to swallow.
Wow, yeah.
So with that information, as it stands right now with what's selected on the sheet, we're technically at a hundred and fifty-four thousand in surplus because I know that this was based off of what we thought insurance would come in at, not what it currently, we know the value to be.
There is a, down under operations where there's the one facilities position. That's, that's actually a position that Mike is encouraging us to
Eliminate.
Eliminate.
So that would be reducing his force. That's not somebody that is leaving. It's
And I can give you even more information in the executive session, but I'm just trying to do that out here.
Can you give me more about the counselor extra day stipends? What does that look like? What does that, I mean, are they?
We have several counselors here today. So we have historically given extra days to our counselors to help with registration. Because we're doing registration in May this year, we, we weren't sure that they were going to be needed in the fall. However, our high school counselors have done a really good job of outlining all of the things that they do in the fall to help the school get ready to get started. And a lot of that is schedule changes and ensuring that kids are registered for their dual credit classes. That, those are things that can't be done now. They, they would need that time in the fall. I'm not, at, at the elementary level, I'm not certain that that's as needed because we're not doing registration dates at the elementary level in the fall. The team has decided that if parents need help with any kind of registering or paperwork, that they would just pop in on a day that worked for them. Once the staff is, or the administrator and the admin assistants are back, they didn't feel like they needed separate days. But that's what those are for. Really just to front load.
So is this amount with or without the high school counselors?
Can, can Norman then come up and
If you need the moral support, yeah, that's fine.
Just want to make sure we cover everything.
So can you?
There's hot tamale snacks in the back though. I heard that if you need some moral support.
How do you introduce yourself and let them know where you work?
Frank Vieira, Lakeland High School Counselor.
Kim Suko, Lakeland High School.
So summer is a big time for getting ready for the upcoming school year. But there's a lot that goes on within our contracted days during that time. We were just talking about it today, how really school has become almost year-round with the advent of email, with summer school, with kids taking college classes, with parents reaching out to us, with 504 plans for special needs kids that are moving to our district, with kids who are failing classes and like, oh my gosh, am I going to graduate on time? What do I need, what do I need to do now during the summer in order to ensure that those things are taken care of? On top of that, we are juggling a master schedule that sometimes changes with people leaving the district or leaving our building or an infusion of people coming in. We have to make adjustments. That entails kids' schedules. We have nine hundred some kids, or close to nine hundred at the high school. Without those days, it would be a real wreck at the beginning of the school year. There would be kids in the first week of school without a schedule. There'd be kids, there'd be teachers who would not know that their students are on 504 plans that have special accommodations that are legally protected. What else can we add?
One thing I just want to chime in on, even though we're opening registration, we're calling it now, that's really the re-verification process for students returning to our district. We're seeing very, very few. I think we have about five so far of new students to the district that they've said, we're coming next year. But every year we get about ninety. So in August, what we have in front of us is about eighty-five or so new students, new families walking through our door that we're not going to know about till then. We need those extra days to meet with those families and do them justice. It takes at least an hour with each family just to really look at their records, get them appropriately placed, welcome them to Lakeland the way we want to welcome our new families. The feedback we get from those families is that they have an experience they haven't had before. They feel like they're treated with a quality of care they've never had. We can only do that if we have this extra time.
Just one more thing to add in. Jimmy Hoffman, Principal of Lakeland High School. This is extremely common practice around the state of Idaho. Just in our neighborhood schools, post-fall school district does fifteen extra days for their counselors. Cortland School District does the exact same, except for they add it on to their actual contract. I would actually recommend that personally.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
So you're not doing two different things. I'd actually
Outside of their contract days where we just
But this would put them, if they didn't have this, this would put them back on a teacher's salary and having them show up at the same time at teachers. I would fear that we probably wouldn't be able to start school on time. That's it. That's all I have.
Thank you.
The reason that they're not in their contract is if ever we had a counselor who also was a teacher and that ha, that has happened, and they decide they don't want to do the counseling anymore and they want to go back to the classroom, Idaho law says that they can't go backwards in pay. And if you put their extra days in their standard contract, then that, that becomes their base pay. So you would continue to pay those fifteen days even though they're no longer doing that. So that's why we've always kept a separate. That's why every single stipend is a separate supplemental contract and not part of their base pay.
So are they teachers and counselors or just counselors?
We are all just counselors.
So it doesn't apply to you?
Yeah, it doesn't. Yep.
So what would cutting the elementary school counselors day, extra days and leaving high school counselor extra days?
I told Jessica she had to be prepared to do some calculations.
That would look like, yeah, I know, that's
Do you need to know who they are?
No, I just, I'm going to be in my hole with my screen.
They're saying to cut the extra stipends for all the counselors. That's what they thought. And he just asked me what it would look like if he just cut the elementary school extra days, but left the high school.
So Jessica's, it would be about sixteen thousand?
It would be about fifteen thousand back in?
So if we were to add those elementary counselors back in, that would put sixteen thousand back into that line item. So that would drop the cuts from fifty-five, seven thirty-one to, can't off the head anymore. So thirty-nine, seven thirty-one.
What do you do just do?
If we were to take the elementary, actually I said
Take only the high school ones?
If we were only to take the high school out, it would decrease that line item from fifty-five thousand, seven thirty-one to about sixteen thousand dollars for a potential elimination. So it's thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars for the high school counselors.
And the middle school.
And the middle school. So about forty thousand dollars.
So your net savings would be sixteen.
How many?
Hey guys, can we not chit chat quite as much? Jessica's in a difficult time concentrating on what she has to do. Go ahead.
How many extra days are on those contracts?
It varies. High school counselors have fifteen.
Thirteen. Middle school, eight. And then elementary is five-five. Like historically, it's been some of the, that, some of those days are on the front end of the school year and then some on the back end of the school year because they have to wrap up transcripts and make sure that the master schedule is ready to go for the fall. Just for giving the permission.
Do want to bring this back to Lisa's point about making sure that we're doing this across the board equitably. Again, this would be a cut to elementary programs. Again, this would be a cut to elementary programs. Just elementary programs, if we were to change the amount. And again, just because it's on here doesn't mean we have to pick it.
We just do as much brainstorming as we could think of.
Can you calculate whether we could just cut one day across the board? All counselors?
Not off the top of my head.
Yeah, it'd be a little difficult because everybody has a different daily rate of pay, and so we have to.
That would require setting down.
Well, just keep in mind, folks, everybody likes to say, it's not in my backyard we're going to do this, but it's got to be done, so just bear with us. I'm not trying to subject anybody to anything unnecessary.
I will say this discussion, this process has not been an easy one or one that has been taken lightly by any stretch of the imagination. There have been a lot of difficult conversations and a lot of tears on my part putting this together because this is not fun.
No, it's not.
Ideally, the state would just fund us for what we need, and we would have to go out to our patrons to help support education, but that's not the world that we're living in, in our state.
But if just on average each counselor's day the rate of pay was three hundred dollars, and I don't know what it is, we have fifteen of them, that's forty-five hundred dollars.
So each day's worth about forty-five hundred dollars?
That's the roughest, and I didn't put benefits in there, that's just the pay.
Where are we going to go here? What's next?
Well, I think that we've all kind of threw in some of my thoughts on the LEA president, that halftime position and the stipend there that we're paying for the LEA representation. And I know that that's been some heartburn.
Shouldn't be funded by the taxpayer, period.
My hearing comes on since you would like me to click this one.
I'd like to see it.
The specialists and the ALP teachers would kind of go hand in hands with the twelve vacant positions just because we would utilize some of those to fill some of those, backfill some of those vacant positions.
Can you explain that?
So when you look at the teachers who are vacating elementary positions, most of those are in the primary classrooms. We have, I think we have one fourth grade teacher. So at Spirit Lake, we absolutely have to have two kindergarten classrooms and two first grade classrooms, so some of those positions have to be filled. We have two staff members that we can, three, that we can move there, and then we're just waiting for registration numbers to come in, and people are not registering their kids. So we've done so much communication and we're just struggling to get people to do it now or they're so trained to do it in August. So once we know for sure what the class sizes look like, if we have to, if we have a first grade classroom that we need to put a person in, and we don't want to hire a new person because we aren't generating any additional monies because our enrollment is flat or down like we're projecting, we do have some positions in the district that were on the first, the first time Becky increased the supplemental levy, those positions were specifically noted on there. They haven't been since, and they're good for kids and they're definitely a nice to have, but they're not necessarily a must-have, and so we could cut back. So for example, we have an advanced learning person at every elementary school, full-time. Half of the time they're doing the advanced learning program and the other half of the time their, the principal's got them doing lots of different things. Some of them are part of the specialist rotation, they get the five prep. Some of them are doing interventions for kids who are struggling. But we could cut those down to three people and have them split halftime at two buildings, which is how we started actually, and then the other three people could go back into classrooms and that would help us to not have to cut into the savings of the twelve. So that's why there's no dollar amount there because we still, they're still ours. It's just putting them where we need them, moving people around. What's hard about that is probably those decisions won't be made until the fall when we have our true registration numbers, which we were hoping to have prior to school ending.
How does a halftime position work at an elementary school? I don't understand that.
Well, we used to do it all the time, and so when I was principal at Betty Kiefer, I had a halftime PE teacher who was split between my building and John Brown. So you could do it where they're in one building for the morning and then they transition at lunchtime to the other building for the afternoon. You can do it where they're Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday morning in one building and then Wednesday afternoon, Thursday, Friday in another building. It's just really, it's the two principals coming together to figure out how to build their master schedules similarly so that the split works. But we used to do that a lot. We worked really hard to get away from that because when you talk to people who are in those positions, they don't ever feel like they have a home because they're never, they may miss every single staff meeting at one building because they're not in that building on that day, and they just, they feel a little bit of a tug of war. But we are looking, just for example, the specialists, when you're looking at the enrollment in our elementary schools going down, when you have a bigger school, if you have three sections of everything, we used to have seven grade levels, now we only have six, and so three sections would be eighteen classrooms that you have to be able to fit into a gym space or whatever, and you can get to twenty-four and get everybody in. So we also are looking at some of that. We've not really reduced any of that since the enrollment started dropping, and so there are ways that we can capture some time so that we don't have to hire more people. And that's what we're really trying to do is protect those cuts, those twelve.
What do the principals assistants at the elementary schools do?
I would tell you as a, having been an elementary principal, I don't know how the principals would do their jobs without them. They help with just all of the discipline now with the behaviors that we are seeing. If we really want the principals to be focused on instructional leadership and continue to see our test scores go up, and our test scores look better this year than they did last year, so that's good news. They have to have somebody else working with them to handle some of those other tasks. They split the responsibility for all the IEP meetings, 504 meetings, the parent meetings. I honestly don't know, because they don't have assistant principals, I don't know how they would do their jobs without the PA. Were there any ideas that you had that we didn't have on the list?
I'm not seeing how much in here that the rest is purchase services. And we're wondering if there's some room there.
Are you thinking plowing? What purchase services are you thinking in particular?
Well, maybe both custodial maintenance, significant dollar amount for purchase services.
Every time we have to go outside and get somebody to fix some electrical, plumbing, how much is that?
Well, we did look into that, a net pulled all of.
September, at board meeting?
A net pulled all of the POs, and at this point, although it looks like it would be a cost savings, we would spend more on staffing right now if we hired an electrician and a plumber, especially since it would be really challenging for us with our current salary schedule to get a professional plumber or electrician to work for the district full-time.
And those purchase services do include the cost of, in some of the cases, the cost of the items that are being installed. Yes, so it's not a straight one-to-one, this is what the labor was.
Mike would love to hire his own people because he doesn't like having to go out to the contracted services, but we looked at the cost benefit, we're not quite there yet.
If we were to bring plowing in-house, again, we would have to expend quite a bit of money to have the appropriate equipment to do it, and then we would also have the increased cost for personnel for that.
We have the plows just sitting out there.
We don't have the vehicles for the plows.
Sorry.
I have been told we do not have the appropriate vehicles for the plows.
I know what you're being told, but I just don't have the degree.
And again, we would have some additional expenditures for salaries and benefits because we would have to either pay overtime for people to do it or not have people here during the day if they came in early to plow.
Well, it's amazing how we managed to do all of that for twenty to thirty years and now we can't seem to handle it.
Have you been over to facilities to look at their vehicles? I don't know if they have a lot of them. Because you seem very confident that they have the vehicles to put.
Virtually all those plows will fit on any pickup. Doesn't matter the year, make or model.
The vehicle inventory was shared with the board at the last couple of board meetings to show how many vehicles we have.
So we can definitely go down that road if that's what the board wants. We just will have to use some plant facility dollars to front-load the costs of making sure we have what we need to do it. And then there would be, I don't think we have a sanding truck anymore, I think that rested out. And I don't know if we ever use like a mag chloride spray or anything.
Think they have a de-izer truck over there?
Yeah, that I don't know, so.
Thought I saw a tank on the back of it.
Well, that's one aspect of it, but as Dave points out, we're going outside for a lot of specialized contract work that's, according to our bill list, have been pretty expensive. And there are times when you have to do that, you don't have a choice, but there are a lot of things that can be done in-house if you have the will to do it.
I will caution, some of the things that have been on the bill list recently were due to freezing pipes at the schools. Those aren't necessarily, those were covered by insurance. So I can bring that to the next board meeting, the difference of what was actually not related to an insurance claim.
I want to go forward, I don't want to go back.
Right, but if there's something particular that we can do.
I'm going to go back to the buses again. So the buses travel twelve miles each while to Spirit Lake. Twelve miles. Atholes fourteen. Buses again, six to nine miles a gallon. So, is my math person.
Yeah, you are, you're good at math.
Again, you're spending money to.
I know, but it's thousands of dollars. I mean, you're going back, that's not including the routes they run. So how many miles are they doing on the routes? So if you drive a bus up there every day, run your route, and you drive back here, then you run it back up there and run the route again, it's crazy. That's tons of money.
So one of the things that we used to do that we can do is when the buses get to the schools and at the, well, they would have to go from the elementary school back up to the, back to the middle schools because that's where they start their afternoon, but they could literally park the buses at Timberlake Middle School and have one bus come back down instead of all of the buses coming. We can definitely do that, that's easy, and that resolves some of what you're talking about. Part of our frustration is if we were to put some sort of a structure somewhere on property that we have up north so that our buses don't have to come down here and people can just drive up there, they don't have to drive down. The new facilities dollars that we're getting from the state, we can't use for that because they can only be used for student occupied buildings. So, and next year's our last year of plant facility levy unless the board wants to do something about that, but I don't know how you justify that with the facility dollars that the state is providing. So there are a couple of little hiccups, I guess, that get in the way a little bit, but we can eliminate, you know, if we have eight buses, I don't know how many buses we have up north, but let's just say it's eight, we would eliminate seven of them going back and forth. At least in the middle of the day, they'd all come back and have to be housed here at night because right now we don't have to work with them.
And there's no plug-ins for them up there for overnight.
That's it.
I don't know what the rules are, like, the state has a big yard up there, you know, for vehicles. A big old, looks like a maintenance yard for.
ITD.
Yeah, transportation department. I don't know, maybe they keep buses up there, I don't know, there's ways to do it, you know.
I will call ITD and ask them about whether they are, but I would guess. Right, I would guess that if we have to plug them in, there's going to be a cost because they're not going to want to pay for the electricity of our buses being charged or plugged in, but.
But we're paying for it here or there, regardless of where we're paying for it.
Where is that yard, Dave's?
Just north, yeah, just north.
On Highway forty-one?
Yep.
Okay, I will look into that. If that doesn't work, at the very least, we can go back to what we used to do, which actually, for a school, from a school safety standpoint, I think works better anyway to have buses somewhere close by so if we have to evacuate kids quickly because we've got a gas leak or something, you can at least put them on buses. The drivers used to leave the keys with us when they were parked in front of my elementary school, and so in an emergency, even though we don't have a CBL, we could at least get them out of off the school grounds somewhere close by, that would be safe. So we can do that.
Anyway, moving forward, I would encourage us to include the increase for the district share of benefits. That's insurance, is that right?
Yes.
Well, and if Mr. Ferriola thinks that that position isn't needed, I would, from his department, he wants it removed.
That puts us at, at thirty thousand one eighty-four, um, and a whole, which actually would be fifty thousand one eighty-four without increasing like a. And that does not include if he raises, um, leaves everybody status quo based on where they're at this year.
Well, you can take almost ten thousand out by reducing the activity bus from Lakewood High School that only one rider, I mean, ten thousand dollars for activity bus that one rider rides.
So we're at essentially twenty thousand six oh one and the whole forty thousand would buy current increase.
How many non-transportation zones do we have in our district?
Jessica Vayner, Transportation Director. We have, um, two, up on Hidden Valley and then Hoyt Road and Church. So up in that area.
And that's where the, where has been some children.
Up on Goon Goon. So on the east side of Good Hope Road, up to the turnaround. There's only a few kids that live up there.
And the families would be all twelve for a general transportation.
Yeah.
Thank you. That one potentially, even if the board doesn't choose to click the little box, if we can't find somebody who wants to drive a bus for half time, when there, and there are no benefits associated with that, it would be, uh, we'd be in the same boat.
Well, we can eliminate that since we brought in the contract breakers.
Again, we'll have to allocate plant facility levy dollars towards that to-
Equipment.
Equipment.
Equipment's gonna, if it costs that much.
Um, according to our president.
And he's wrong. I don't care what he says. I can get a four-wheeler for six thousand dollars and if it can, it'll be high, use a sprayer for four hundred bucks all day long.
But either way, we're talking about one-time cost of purchases and annual costs.
Same question.
You know, I think that's an important thing. Your eight-six-hundred?
Yes.
Did you click the bus, the four-hour bus driver?
Uh, I did not. I didn't. Maybe I'll six thousand short.
And the software costs, that was already something that we're not meeting or?
Yep, that's already kind of a done deal.
So let's click that one too. It's down in your operation costs.
I would, um, I, we have talked with librarians about producing their budgets for next year, um, which will give us time to really work through our library process with all of the things coming with the new bill, um, without buying new stuff, so we can deal with what we do have. And they were, they were fine with that for this year.
So this will leave on the small budget for materials for next year just to, um, repair books and those kinds of things, but.
So taking out this full twenty-five thousand would still leave them with some budget to-
Yes, yep, some supply budget.
Do the necessary. Well, I'd much rather do that than eliminate positions. But we would, we would eventually need to add that back in at a future year that I just don't wanna kick back in too far down the road.
But we'd have, maybe next year, there's a little bit of additional discretionary money from the state. You just never know what they're gonna allocate and, uh, how those dollars come.
So that puts us at twenty-three thousand essentially surplus. Um, again, that doesn't include any changes to pay or, um, the stipends as they are this year.
So that, the, um, library materials budget, that was for all the schools?
Yes. Definitely each school, a small supply budget, um, but just not funds to purchase new library materials.
And it's like twenty-three hundred dollars for each school. What do they typically spend for?
That's about what they get for each school.
Um, for their, like, repairs or whatever you were saying?
We left five hundred dollars on each school for that.
And then do they share any part of the building's budget itself?
They can if the administrator chooses to spend their, their funds that way.
Yeah, if they need something beyond, that was the conversation that we had, if they could go to their principal and make that request. So does the principal control those funds one hundred percent?
Which funds?
The, at the building level?
The four ten. So there, the building budgets are split into instructional materials. Um, there's basically student funds, which are your instructional materials. There's a couple of things I'm just throwing complete blank right now.
No, you're fine. Well, cause you just said that if the principal allows it, so that means you should-
So there's, there's two different budgets. There's your instructional materials budget. They can choose to take it out or they'd like, there's also basically administrator budget, which is like their office supplies for the admin team. They have also taken it out of there as well. And sometimes they use their, um, local school funds depending on what they would like to do. So it's, it's up to each building and how they work with their team, how they divvy that out. We just, we let that happen at the building level and then we approve the purchases as they come our way. And ask questions as necessary.
Right, and we only started doing that a few years ago, right? As far as the whole building budget hands-off kind of thing, wasn't that a prior administration, uh? I, as a building, as a building principal, I had a budget, but it was significantly smaller than, um, what it is now. Uh, and I, all I had was my, the instructional supplies and then, um, furniture and equipment because that came out of plant facility levy. Um, and we just, so I think we got like ten thousand dollars in first supplies, instructional supplies. And I just divvied that up and just kinda said, uh, each grade level has this much money, um, for their supplies. And then we kept just a little bit in case some special project or something came up. But we, I think everybody does it a little bit differently. Um, we've al- so we've always had a little bit of money from the district that we could use to buy those things, but, um.
So the building budgets are, um, instructional materials, field trips, office supplies, postage, library. And then at the secondary schools, uh, there's art in yearbook. And then at the high schools, um, there's some additional for drama, TV and music, um, secondary. Well, middle schools also get some music funds. So we're looking at just that library. We worked really hard last year to kinda put a student rate to it um, so that as enrollment fluctuated, we can adjust those budgets. Um, so when we did move, um, the boundaries last year and we had some shifts over to John Brown, um, they were actually able to benefit from that influx of students based on that per dollar, per student rate because the enrollment shifted over there. So they had the additional funds in their building budgets for that. It works both ways though. Some buildings did those funds this year because they had a decline in enrollment, but it just washed against, um, the buildings that had potentially an increase, so.
I guess I would ask what your recommendation is to the board for all this? Since you guys played with all the figures and who, like, I don't know who it's gonna affect, what building it's gonna affect. I mean, it's, all this is, is just a line item with a number, so I really don't have enough information for my brain. So what is your suggestion? What do you recommend that the board do? Well, I think the first decision has to be deciding, do you want to, to give everybody? But I wanna know what you, your recommendation, you and, to play with the numbers. You guys obviously put this together based on some scenarios you had in your head. And that's why I'm asking, what box do you want the board to check? I would suggest that we give the step increases to the certificated and classified staff. Um, we've, we've been in a position before where we've frozen people and that's, that's, that was very problematic and hard to come back from, so I would rather not do that. Um, so if we clicked those things, um, and then, let me go down to the bottom. Um, we talked about, um, the, so, uh, there we go. The interscholastic activities to budget in the uniform rotation. When we talked to, um, Jimmy and Ryan, um, Ryan in particular felt like the uniform rotation for a year was, um, not a big deal and, um, that was one that he recommended. Um, if we hold the interscholastic activities to budget, that one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, uh, that just means that if, if either one of the schools goes over, that, then it would come from there, building athletic budgets, which, um, could be problematic depending on if it's a good year or a bad year. And part of the reason that we went to the, we put this on the levy, the way we did was because, um, when Becky Kane, Timberlake High School, was hundreds of thousands of dollars in the red every year because of athletics, because of all the state tournaments that they participated in. And people were, families were having to fundraise to send kids to state. And we had, um, a cheerleading team that made it to state from Timberlake and then couldn't go because they couldn't raise the funds. And so we were trying to kind of get away from that. But, um, I, uh, on the levy, we put that we were spending one point three million dollars on interscholastic and athletics and we spent-
We're projected to spend basically a hundred, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand more than what we had levied for.
Almost one point five million. Um, so that was one that we looked at, was let's just hold the line on athletics and maybe do a better job next year of finding ways to share rides to places and, um, cut back on some of the transportation costs. So that was one that we had marked, so we've marked that one.
Yep, I did.
Okay, so we're at three forty-seven. And then can you write down, um, we, uh, so at the high school level, um, these are, now we're talking positions. So, um, let's go to the, Kelsey, um, felt pretty strongly that the, we could, um, we need, in order to reduce some of the costs to special education, that that was a place we could do it and not impact what's happening in classrooms. Um, so we had that one marked.
That's Kelsey's.
And then we marked the field trip budget, um, the fifty-five to hundred, cause again, it doesn't, it's not a person.
Is that, uh, eliminating all except for that one you mentioned?
So that doesn't end with interscholastic activities.
Those are, those truly are field trips.
Just truly just field trips.
The issue that we're having, and, and we have, we do have some elementary principals here, but, um, they struggled to spend their field trip budget because of our double routing. So the kids get dropped off at nine at the elementaries. By the time they do attendance and everything, they could leave by nine-thirty and maybe get to where they're going by ten fifteen, ten thirty, depending. But they have to be back at their elementary school by one because the buses have to get back to the secondary school. So they are really, really limited in what they can do for field trips. So this, this was one for us that we felt like we're not using to our full advantage anyway right now because of the double routing of buses. Um, but the one that everybody felt really strongly needed to stay was the Cattellville mining one that the fourth graders do because it's so embedded in there for as long. So that's, that was the why for that one. Um, yes.
The crocs one, one is usually reimbursed, so third grade can do it.
Uh, so thank you Tiffany for reminding me. Our third graders, um, get to go to the croc center to learn how to swim every spring and that's reimbursed, so that wouldn't be a cost to us as far as transportation goes. And we would continue to do that. Can you go back and see where we were? Got two fifty-one. So we had the interscholastic, the one forty-nine marked, so we marked that one.
It is marked already.
Oh, okay. Um, we also did eliminate the extra pay for extra duty stipends. I, um, and that's in the negotiated agreement, so that would be, I mean, that would require the IBP team to be willing to do that. Um, but these are not the, the big stipends that are in there for like yearbook and, um, prom and those things that are already identified. These are, these are specifically every building gets a, like, I think Jimmy got the most and it was about two thousand dollars to give little tiny stipends to staff or-
The other one I can quickly use you was the eliminate extra day stipends. Um, those were just coming on time stipends for a couple individuals.
For the administr- the administrative, so that one, yep, we marked. Um, and then, so we're at two ten. Um, so then the other place that we looked, um, was, uh, the BICS. So the behavior intervention coaches, those were, that's a position that we used to not have. And when we were looking at being so far over on classified staff and not really being able to cut, um, not being able to cut, um, special education- not being able to cut special education, this was a place where we could start to reduce that. The good news is, is we do have some, we have some open para positions, and these people are really good. So they wouldn't necessarily lose their job, but it would be a reduction of those eight positions because they could fill positions that are open.
Where, what schools would be impacted by these? The PSC, the BICS, the?
The PSCs would be all schools. And the BICS would be the elementaries and the middle schools. So, and when I, when we talk to the elementary principals, you know, that's a hard one for them because these people do help with behaviors. But when we started talking about, is it the PA position or the BIC position? They felt, they were all united and the PA is a position we can't do without. So.
The five percent, it puts us above. The other thing, if we held the AVE stipends at the shares rate and then just allowed for the movement if they're moving anywhere but to AVE 5, so holding the stipends at the current year value. But if you went from AVE 1 to AVE 2, allowing you to have that increase, that would be 115,000 if we did that.
That we'd have to find.
That we'd have to find, yes. Otherwise, everybody would stay exactly where they are. Or we could eliminate them completely. If we eliminate them completely, it's 726,000. That's in the negotiated agreement, though. If we tried to back into putting some of that back into our salary matrix and moving people accordingly, without those factored in, we would look at a $500,000 savings. And again, that is all part of the negotiated agreement. Ideally, we would move in that manner anyway over the next.
Just to be able to make our salary schedules sustainable.
Yeah.
Especially if the board is wanting to keep the supplemental levy the same or even potentially reduce, which you guys have talked about. If there's not going to be an increase, we can't continue to supplant, I guess, the dental fund dollars for the stipends.
What was the thought process of eliminating 12 positions and not five positions? And who's being eliminated, like where are they, what?
So they're just, those are 12 positions that are being vacated either by somebody who's retiring or resigning. And we just happened, that was the number that we had at the time. So then we looked at, if we didn't fill these positions, would we be able to still have a master schedule of high schools that worked? Would we still be able to fill the elementary positions? And at this point, the answer to that question is yes.
So as we've had declining enrollment, and then we're also, we stepped up during the asset dollar years. We stepped up and we're seeing less students. We haven't adjusted our ratios, and so that's why those 12 positions, I feel would be appropriate move. It would get us closer to what the state is actually funding us. Not funding us, because it's still not a one-to-one funding. But we would get closer to that FTE count that the state is giving us a weighted average salary for. We're, with all due respect, we're overstaffed.
Yeah.
I don't like saying that. I don't want anybody to not have a job, but we're overstaffed based on the enrollment that we have.
And these are positions that are already gone anyways, correct? That you just, so we're already functioning without, okay.
Well, they're people that are going anyway, so we're not getting rid of people that have a position. We might be moving somebody to a different position.
Yeah, so there might be some movement. So you have someone that, I'm just gonna throw random things out there, so don't hold me to anything I'm not gonna say. But if you have declining enrollment at Apple, but John Brown has more kids next year, we potentially might shift a teacher from, oh, over to John Brown, vice versa. We might have a teacher from Timberlake Middle School that goes. So like, it just really, it's looking at that, I know that.
So these people could be here, so we haven't functioned without these positions.
Right, they are currently, right, they are, these 12 people are working for us this year. They've, they just have notified us that they're not coming back next year. So instead of doing what we typically do, which is opening the positions and filling them, we're trying to be.
Where are, where are, I mean, you have a breakdown, like how many elementary, second, do they do that?
Yeah, so we did have a couple of special, Brooke Cunningham, Director of VHS, we had a couple of special education positions that we did have to replace. But I have here.
I just wanna go with I first.
I have a second grade at Spirit Lake. We have a social studies up at Lakeland High School. We have a second grade at Garwood. We have a visual media art at TMS. We have a kindergarten at Apple. We have a specialist position at TMS. And we have a math position at Mountain View. First grade, okay, first grade at Garwood. We have a first grade at John Brown. And we have a second grade at Apple. We have a fourth grade at Spirit. And then, and Spirit is, you know, there's, sounds like we're gonna be able to do some shopping there because it's a few positions. And then we have another specialist at Apple.
And you don't think the enrollment in those first grade and the kindergarten classes will be too high?
No, we'll definitely need two at those primary grades because even if they only have 31 kids, which in some buildings, that's what we're projecting. You can't have a first grade classroom of 31.
Right.
So we're gonna have to have two. We're just waiting to kind of get a sense of what the registration numbers are going to be. We have, we've got Betty Keaton right now is overstaffed by one person, so that person can move. And then we have two other positions that we, that are not currently assigned to a building. We're just kind of waiting to see where they need to go. One of those was a reduction of a specialist at Twin because they had a lot of specialists. So we have the capacity to be able to fill all of those classrooms without hiring anybody. And that's, if we didn't have that capacity, I wouldn't have recommended all 12. I would have reduced that, but we do have the ability to fill those. So we're really at about 50,000. Right, surplus.
Are there any other questions on any of the other items? Is there anything, knowing that we have a small surplus here that you would like me to take off that we have selected?
What did you have selected up at the top at the shortfall area?
So we currently have a step increase for certificated employees, a step increase for classified employees, and then an increase in the district share of benefits. So that's essentially increasing what we're paying for employee benefits on a monthly basis. The classified and certificated employees do not include any of the building administrators or any directors.
We didn't mark that as an director.
We kept those separate for a reason.
Did you select, back down at the classified cuts, did you select the, I don't remember what that was, down at the BICS, did you select that one?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, you didn't do the admin assistance?
Correct.
And where were they at, what schools were those?
We were looking at one FTE at Timberlake High School and then a half of an FTE at two of the elementary, the two smallest elementary schools.
Which?
Twin and I think Spirit Lake. And we did a, just, because I was, it was bothersome to me as a principal that when things were equal, like you're the second largest school in the district, but you have the same amount of help basically for kids as somebody who has 300 students fewer than you do. So I tried, when I, when we looked at that, I, we put kind of a ratio together to say, okay, you have this many students, and you have this many admin assistants, and if you divide, it's one to however many. And trying to keep the grade band similar, like the two comprehensive high schools, their ratio should be similar. The two middle schools, their ratios should be similar, and the six elementaries. So it wasn't like we just randomly chose. It was, that was how we were looking at it. And as we have been looking at declining enrollment, we really haven't gone back and done that in several years to just see. I mean, again, it's people, and I would tell you that that's, if there was anything on here that Mr. Everland didn't want us to check, it would be that one because everybody has a job in that building and it's a fine-oiled machine, and he's concerned about the impact of that.
As am I.
That is, yeah, and the elementary people. Tiffany's concerned because she's got a brand-new admin assistant coming in, and so to have only a part-time person helping, she's concerned about that, so. That's why I didn't mark that one right there. Another kind of easy one, I guess, that we could talk about and why I didn't mark it is that reduce the high school library. So at Lakeland High School, they have a, they have a library lead who's in charge of the library, and then a full-time assistant. And at Timberlake, they have a full-time library lead and a half-time assistant. My only concern about doing that is in addition to all of the library responsibilities that those two ladies have, they are the testing coordinators for both schools. So that's any kids who are taking IDLA, who have to take an IDLA class, have to do it through them, all the ISAT testing, the SATs. Any kiddos who have IEP accommodations or five or four accommodations where they get to take a test in a smaller or a quieter environment, go down to the library. There's a lot that they do on top of the work in the library. So that's why I didn't select it, but that would be another area where we could talk about.
Have we done anything with the building guest teachers?
We selected that one because that is something we feel we have to do.
That was the one that I talked about. Remember, we had, like, every building had its own guest teacher assigned to it, and they were there every day.
But they're on a special assignment?
Yeah, but Brooke was very concerned about doing that because she felt like since they were literally expected to be there every day, that we kind, they're our permanent employee, not just a guest teacher, and we should be paying benefits, and we're not. So we are, and the cost of that is actually more than the 142,987. But this is the savings that, because there's, we still have to have guest teachers in those classrooms.
We're still gonna have an increase in sub-costs because we're eliminating the guest teacher, so we try to factor that in.
So this is the difference between having them full-time in those schools and having the subs that would cover those classes?
The true definition of a substitute.
Brooke Cunningham, the Director of VHS.
I'm not hearing any reason not to do that.
We haven't marked it.
We already marked it.
It's on there.
That was the first thing marked?
Yeah. Would you like me to move up?
You keep moving it up and down.
I'm sorry. So there's nothing else on here that we have questions on or that we would like to check or uncheck? The reason I did ask for this to be a special meeting is so that the board could take action on this if they so desire, so that we can move forward with building the budget in preparation for the budget hearing and to move forward with IBP.
I just have one other thing.
Absolutely.
In all fairness to all staff, if we're giving step increases to certified and classified, I think we should go to the administrators as well. And that way, it's across the board, it's fair.
I would agree with you because some of this reduction, not advocating one way or the other, I'm just recognizing that with some of the reductions and the other areas, that is going to put more on our admins. Specifically, if we remove some of the BICS and stuff like that, that's just gonna have more. We're increasing their workload with some of these adjustments, so.
So if we do that, then we're right at the 20,000, basically. So we're right where we should be.
So that would leave a small, small amount of wigwam.
$4,860. But it's balanced.
Again, knowing that, given that small amount of wigwam, if anything were to drastically change next year, that would be a discussion with the board because that would require us to look at utilizing fund balance unless we get some magical pot of money from somewhere.
Good luck with that.
Scroll down.
Yes. I feel like I'm at the eyedropper when I move it back.
Well, I'm looking at 5% of building budgets, you know. We're investing about 200 grand, close to 200 grand. we're investing about 200 grand, close to 200 grand, across the schools, right?
I can double-check that number for you.
And we did a, was it 5% reduction?
It was just on the instructional office supplies postage.
Oh, so this is overall budget?
Yeah, because the field trips we had pulled out as a separate item.
So 10% would be $18,400.
Right.
Which means 100% would be $180,000.
Yeah, I think it's $180,000 also.
So actually, that is just on the instructional materials. That might be 200. So for instructional materials, office supplies and postage, we're at $207,000. That's what it currently is.
I would propose we take that to 10% reduction.
So that would, with that change, that would bring us up to about $23,000 surplus for next fiscal year.
So talk to us again about why it allows.
Freeze aid statements that allow step movement. So this essentially would freeze those statements as they currently are in the negotiated agreement. So aid one through five, or one through four would stay at the existing levels that they're at. So if you're eighth four and you move to eighth five next year, you would just stay at the $7,494 for aid four next year, you would still get it. This is accounting for that step movement. So if you were eight one and are going to eight two, you would be allowed to have that step. That step, so it would bring 726, so eight 35 for statements for aid next year.
Cost is $115,000.
Yes, to do the steps.
I recommend we do that.
Second that.
So that would, just to clarify, that would freeze, looking at my screen, that would freeze the dollar amounts when we go to IBB. That would be something that we would have to talk about, is there won't be no change in those aid one through four, but we would allow the movement if they're moving.
Now we have to find $91,000. I'm sorry, see, a little random, just a clarifying question, again, Brooke Cunningham. That would, would that also include the P5s moving to aid one?
Yes, absolutely, yes. So P5s moving to aid one, so anybody that would be on the aid scale, if they're on the aid scale. So if they're moving on to the aid scale, which is why there is an increase, we anticipate we'll have a group, we'll need a larger group moving on to the eighth rungs this next year, which is why that dollar amount is significant. A lot of our veteran staff are at AP4 right now on that state career letter. Thank you.
So we have to find $91,000.
$71,000, or $91,000, yes. So $91,000, just off the top of my head, that's the library's, if we're scrolling back through this list. Or not the library.
Nope, it's the admin assistants.
Yep. We could also adjust the counselor extra day statements to the $16,000 for the elementary instead of the 55 if we adjusted it down just for elementary counselor days and just do the $16,000 there instead. So we have that up here at 55, but that included high school and middle school counselors as well.
You said that was 16?
Yeah, it would be roughly $16,000 instead of 55.
If you added that to the 49, it'd be at 65.
Five equals, so we need 91. Do you want me to throw 11 or just see what it looks like?
We do.
And then you said that 49 for the library. So that cuts us by $6,000, which is $26,000.
There's not much left to choose from.
Yeah, there's really not much left to choose from. The AD contracts, or the AD statements up in middle school would be a chunk of it. We've already increased the building budget cuts to 10%. We took one day off of the middle school and the high school extra day counselor segments. What did we say? That would be about $4,500. So if we made that $20,500, if we reduced one day for secondary counselors, I know it's not popular, none of this is popular.
Would it actually only be, it would be nine? So nine, so it'd be $2,700? Since we already eliminated the elementary.
If it just came, I can't put it on there.
How are we negotiating this over?
No, we do have some cuts right now in paras just because we have kids who are graduating who had one-on-ones, or we had an interpreter, but the student who needed the interpreter is graduating. Jessica is hesitant to count those as savings because if we get people who move in and we have to hire a para, we're cutting it down.
It's not, it's a fluid number. Permanent positions are, you're just throwing out there custodial.
Which is what I proposed, if I change my admin assistant.
How many of those positions, as we were already talking about, were?
Paras, we have four, seven, oh, four, six.
That are dropping off. Eight?
So far, plus three more, so 11. They're showing me their fingers. We didn't count paras as cost savings because we know we end up having to hire them, so we didn't. But there are 11.
Inevitably, if a student moves into the district or requires a one-on-one, we have to provide a one-on-one. So we have to hire that position back. It's a fluid cost, it's not something like, that I know that if we cut, I can say, absolutely not, you can't hire that back.
What's one of those positions worth?
They're like about $30-ish.
With benefits. With benefits, about $30,000. It takes about three paras to be one certificated position.
So how much?
About $30,000.
Thirty, yeah. One minus one is about.
Yeah, one minus one, yeah. But again, I can't guarantee that I can't hire, I won't have to hire.
I don't have guarantees.
So it's probably safe to say that, I mean, we have an interpreter that we don't need coming back, and unless we specifically get a student who's hearing impaired, that's not a position we would need to hire back. It's a little bit more specific. So maybe just put the interpreter in there.
So I'm just going to put one para FTE and then throw it in this line just so I don't have to add and do also some fun math here.
308, 508, if it's 30,000.
Nice job, Randy.
Thanks, Randy. I'm glad you could not have in your head still.
So that should, that should put us back to balance, right? $3,181, sitting in the bank. And if we keep the buses up north and they run back midday, that saves us a little bit of money.
So keeping in mind the transportation costs is not a primary question.
Right, we receive state revenue for transportation costs. So if we do decrease our cost there, we are essentially looking at decreasing our revenue for transportation as well, just so you know, legal hand incentives.
Does the transportation, file fees for transportation, or do we pay some other?
We do pay some other junk.
About 75%.
In the transportation.
Can you scroll down a little bit, please, Jessica? So are you wanting us to make decisions too on some of these zero-dollar?
Some of them.
Like moving the specialists to vacant positions? I mean, that's kind of a given.
Right, those are only as needed, and we can keep the board up to date as those decisions are having to be made.
I think it's only right to hold that interscholastic budget. We expect everybody else to hold their budgets within it. We all understand how important interscholastics are, but we need to stick within our means.
I'm not surprised.
I'm not surprised.
There's nine. Any other adjustments or questions? I would appreciate action on this document so that we are able to move forward with the budgeting process and to meet the appropriate timelines for this date at our budget hearing. And also to be able to schedule IBB so we can finalize that process hopefully.
I would move we approve the adjustments as outlined in the document presented. Second.
Okay, here you have motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Neat.
Ayes, pass. Motion passed.
Good job, Jessica.
This has been very stressful for us.
The lot of work.
I do know it's 806, but you had mentioned on previous workshops that you were concerned about our other funds, since we're only working in the general fund right now. There, I don't anticipate a ton of movement. With our federal funds, we were kind of prompted not to expect that revenue next year. So I'm budgeting for no revenue next year. We don't have really anything set to go there every year because it's kind of one-time money. So what we did have go there this year, there's fund balance to cover it next year. It's like $8,000 for our K-type agreement, so that they help us with our Perkins Grant. And base, we're looking to make sure that it is a self-sustaining program next year, not eating into balance. Given that, I did want to bring up the fact that our summer-based program currently, we only have 16 students enrolled. If we do not have more than that by next Friday, we are going to have to pull the plug on the program because that is not sustainable to run a program for 16 children that are not coming every day of the week. It's kind of a varied situation. On any given day, we have about 13 children that we would provide care for. So I just wanted to apprise the board of that situation. Moving through, I know we anticipate a cut to title funds due to our decrease in enrollment and also our decrease in prying reduced applications. So we're looking at about, I think it was $36,000 to $48,000 there. We had some discussions today on what that would potentially look like moving forward. Our special education idea program funds, they said it might be about a 1% increase. I'm on a budget flat. They don't have guaranteed numbers. Even a 1% increase would be 40 bucks, so I'm not super, I'm on a budget flat on that one. Food services, they're operating kind of within their means this year. We had some commodity, or not commodity monies, supply chain grant funds that kind of helped them stay pretty break even. I do want to remind the board, a couple of years ago, the contract with our food service manager did go from a break even contract to a subsidy contract. We have not had to subsidize because we've had so much revenue in that account. But just to remind you that it is not a break even contract with our food service management company. We will potentially have to subsidize. When they took away the 40 per meal revenue that they were giving us previously, they had given us kind of a couple of years where they were helping offset the cost of providing those meals. So they took that away this year, and that was a huge revenue hit. Fortunately, the supply chain grant covered that. We don't know, I think this was the final year of the supply chain grant, so I do anticipate that we will start eating into the food services fund balance. If we eat into it as proposed in three to four years, we would potentially have to put some funds in there. I did talk to Mr. Doyle about that, and he reminded me in a conversation that he had with trustee Jones that we'll have that conversation when we have to start paying. So just to let you know, that is something in a couple of years that we may have to have an influx from general fund into food services to offset that cost. It's not something I anticipate will happen for a couple of years. Other than that, I'm trying to think of any of our other special funds, Medicaid, literacy funds, those are all funding that we receive when we transfer expenses from the general fund to offset the revenue that we receive. We always have to zero it out, so any revenue we can't carry afford, any revenue we receive, we use an expense against it.
Any that we don't use, we lose. Any that we don't use, we lose the following year, so we make sure we use it.
We use it. We make sure we use it. Um the state uh technology money, I think, will go down just a little bit next year. But again, um with some of the heat rate rebates that we've received, it should be sufficient to operate for what we need. Trying to think if there's anything else that I'm missing. Uh the only S R dollars that we have left are related to homeless um funds. And our title consulting teacher has a plan in place to have those all expended by the deadline of September thirtieth. It's just, I think we have twenty, thirty thousand dollars left there, but we do not have any other S R funds available. It's just related to our homeless funds. So that is essentially the other funds. I do not anticipate new revenue. They'll either be flat or a little bit less from we've had conversations.
We're out of the bond business?
Uh we have one more payment and then we are out of the bond business and I'll be very happy for the L two to not have to report that. And then just again, to remind you with the the money that we are receiving from the state um for facilities, we have two pots of money that are coming in from the state for facilities. The first one is more property tax relief. Um it is being built as a facilities though, but it is property tax relief. It goes on to house bill two ninety two. Um I'm looking at her, she's got all the codes and everything and I had like a catalog and I'm like, she knows the numbers for me. Um but uh house bill two ninety two essentially is providing a little bit more. But as they do that, they're taking away our maintenance lottery money and our bond equity.
Stabilization.
Equalization fund, equalization fund. So we're losing some money, but it goes against property taxes. So we're gonna get the money, but I have to report it on our L two and the L two is what I report to the counties to levy. So our supplemental levies on there. Um this year, we won't have the bond levy on there. We'll have our plant facility levies on there. So we have to use this money first against any bonds. We won't have any. So then we have to use it against our supplemental levy. So instead of the nine point five, two million that we're levying, on our L two, we will report the reduction based on what the state gives us. The last time I saw the number, I think it was two point nine on the spreadsheet that we received, but I haven't seen that number again. It was just a snippet. I haven't seen an official number. So instead of, let's say it's just an even two thousand or two million, instead of levying nine point five, the state's gonna give us two million of that, so we'll only levy seven point five. So our patrons will receive property tax relief because the state's giving us two million directly and then we'll levy the rest. The other pot of money that we're receiving from the state is related to a billion dollar bond that they are taking out. If we choose to take it annually, um we have to apply it to our supplemental levy first. If we take it in a lump sum, we do not have to use it in that manner. However, because they are bonding for this money, if at any time the revenue that they have dedicated to this does not meet the needs of the bonds to pay the payments, we would have to pay that money back. So I would caution as we do this that we set aside a portion of that to ensure that we have an ability to meet that obligation if that should come true. I also will be using, we'll be putting that money in a separate um investment account. It's gonna be in a separate fund. The state's already told us what fund to put it in. But we'll be tracking the interest revenue associated that and holding it as a rainy day as well. In case whatever we decide as a reserve is not sufficient, should they call the bonds and we have to pay back a portion of what they're giving us. About eighteen million, if you split it over ten years, one point eight million a year. However, they're taking away money from us and if we don't have our plant facility levy, we're really getting about four hundred thousand dollars additional a year um for facilities.
Well, we're not getting any because the one point eight is applied to the supplemental levy, so there's no money.
No, no, I'm just saying, if we took the eighteen million and choo- chose to divvy it up over eight or ten years, if we chose on our end to divvy it up over ten years, we're really only getting about four hundred thousand dollars in revenue. Thank you for the clarification. It's not that I would, I would never say we should take the annualization because I, we need to have that that money for facilities. So we would take, I would recommend that we take the lump sum and then divvy out appropriately. That money is intended to be used for student occupied buildings and it's to get those buildings to good or perfect condition, which we all know eighteen million is not going to do that. So is there any other questions on any of the other funds? I will bring all of this obviously with the budget here. You know, have a full detailed report similar. Um I'd like to use the same format that I utilize for our monthly financials because I feel like you're comfortable with that format. It's a little bit more detailed. That's what's been clarified in the past. But I'll basically show what this year's budget was, what our actuals were at that point in time, our estimated actuals will be, and that what next year's budget will be based on these conversations and the estimated end fund balance for that. So it'll be very similar to what you see for monthly financials instead of the little blocks um that we had last budget hearing. Can I answer any other questions about um the other funds?
No, thank you for that.
We do have a, we do have a little bit of a plan for how to generate some additional revenue for the district next year.
Superintendent about this?
So superintendent Critchfield met with the superintendents and mentioned to us that there's a law on the books in Idaho called the self-directed learner law, which we've never used. But it allows us to identify based on meeting certain criteria, students as self-directed learners. And once they're identified in that way and as long as they maintain their level of performance, they're counted as being in attendance regardless of whether they're in attendance or not, once they have that label. So one of the things we're we're struggling with at the high school level right now is we have a lot of kids who petition for grades every semester and it's tends to be the same kids. But a lot of them are petitioning because they participate in a hockey league and so they they leave on Fridays to go play that or they're in their gym, uh gymnast and they're leaving on Fridays to go to meets. And um they're maintaining As and Bs in their coursework, but they're having to petition for their grades every year because they're choosing to be athletes outside of school. This law would allow us to count them if they were identified as the self-directed learner in attendance. So they wouldn't have to, they they wouldn't have to petition for their grades, which would make high school principals' lives.
And we use it for all secondary class.
Uh it starts at fifth grade, yeah, so we could use.
An example, my daughter had surgery in January. She was out for two weeks. We could have, she would have probably qualified just because of her grades. Um we would have been able to have that revenue for her attendance during that time, even though she was not in school.
So it really increases your rating here.
Yes, which is ultimately where we need to be. We really need to work on um attendance.
One percent increase in A D A is a great.
It is a significant dollar amount. So if we had um most recently looking at it was ninety two percent attendance. And so if we could increase that, that would help our overall numbers.
Yeah, back in the day, we used to be ninety seven percent prior to COVID and so we just have, we dropped and we're struggling to get back up. And our schools have done a good job of training them and sending vice kids to be at school, but they learned that I can, I can do work outside of school, schoolwork, and I can do these other things and so that's what they're doing. So she just really encouraged us to use this law in our, to our advantage. And um the Bonner's Ferry School District has been doing that for a couple of years. So they they have a policy that's written that they said they would share with us because in order to utilize the law, we first have to have a policy that we next have we're going to do it. So we can get a copy of that and take it to the policy committee to look at this summer and get get that ball rolling just to try to help us generate additional ADA revenue.
Can I answer any other budget, fiscal, financial, anything?
No, thank you. I appreciate that.
I'm good.
All right, eight nineteen, median adjourned.